And the wetlands, I'm sorry. The Wetlands Agency, which the Planning and Zoning Commission will have its meeting directly after. This is for October 2nd, 2014. I invite you to join with us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the vice chairman please, I'm sorry, mess up here. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chambers. To my left, exit through the double doors, turn left, walk down a flight of stairs, and outside of the building. Or exit the rear chamber doors. In either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Second vice chair, please take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin.
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Secretary Peter Falk. Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
Here.
Commissioner Ronald Gregory. Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Here.
Commissioner Dominic Alimo.
Commissioner.
Drynan will be sitting.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Drynan will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. First is the approval of minutes, March 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve March 6th Enfield Aquifer Protection Agency regular meeting on Thursday, March 6th.
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion?
Came out pretty good.
Well, I think there's a lot of things in there that don't belong, and there's things missing.
Yeah.
I don't think it's necessary to, for example, asking where I say Rachel, the speaker's on, they don't sound it, can you hear me up there? I don't think that's necessary for the minutes at all. And down below, motion was made, down below Chairman Durin, motion was made to approve, and they didn't hear it. That's approved a minute. I mean, there's other things all through. I don't think it's necessary to put in the ums and okays, that's not. This is a transcript which we don't really need. If you want to approve it, that's fine, but there's a lot of errors, things drop off. It even says about where the phone rang. So I.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
I know there is, that's.
So, I'd say then, I agree with that. There was a lot of ums in there and.
I think it should be cleaned up.
Cleaned up. Okay.
Do you want me to do the roll?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chairman Charles Durin.
Against.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Against.
Secretary Peter Falk. Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, against. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Against.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
Against.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
Against.
Commissioner Ron Gregory. Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Against.
And Commissioner Dominic Alimo.
Motion fails. Motion to table would be in order.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin.
For.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Table.
Secretary Peter Falk. Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, table. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Table.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
Table.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
Table.
Commissioner Ronald Gregory. Commissioner Alan Drynan.
For tabling.
Commissioner Dominic Alimo.
Kathy, I don't think you have to read the ones that are absent, just who's here.
Okay.
Staff reports, and I believe that's why you're here.
Yes. Good evening. I sent you a very brief memo in the packet. I hoped to be a little further down the road with the aquifer protection renovations to the literature, but Rachel and I met, and we did get a lot accomplished. However, Rachel left, and I'm still working on it. What I did was, just for your, just to explain to you, I went to the state aquifer protection regulations. That's what ours are based on. And I pulled all their forms, and they're much better than ours. So, I'm going to pick and choose which forms I think are necessary. You know, it's very confusing with the less than one acre, more than one acre, five acres and less than, you know, but not more than 10. And so, I had talked to Rachel about that. And I'm going to condense the forms, and I'm going to send them to you to evaluate and see if we can simplify. There's no problem with the letters still not going out, because as you see in the memo, we have until 2018. I want to finish it up this year, but I want to do it correctly. And there were a few things that seemed to have gotten lost in transition the first time around, and I'd like to do the best job I can with it. Also, I met with a representative from Connecticut Water. Their well field on Powder Hill Road is in the aquifer. It already is there. Federal and state mandate that every so many years, you have to drill another, well, wellhead, so that you have a fallback. And if anything happens to the one you're using, you switch to that one. And the time came, and they drilled it, and it's there. Now they have to enclose it. And apparently, the building that they have now with all the wellheads is full. And what they want to do is put a 12 by 13 attachment to the building. He can't get approval from the state and from the federal government, Connecticut Water can't, until the aquifer protection agent or the aquifer protection commission member signs off on a no need for permit. And I checked both the state and our regulations, and it's not anything that needs a permit. I did find, just for your knowledge, I did find, every time an aquifer application comes before you, excuse me, we're supposed to send it to the state and to the water company first for their feedback. Kind of like when you send the referrals to.
CROC.
Yes. And I would like, I had included a sample of what I wanted to have done. And it's totally up to you if you want the chairman's name on it, or if you want the agent's name on it. Jose signed off on all the other ones, and he was your agent. I know Connecticut Water Company is very eager to get this done, and we seem to be a bit of a stumbling block. And it's not anybody's fault, it's just we don't meet on a regular basis.
You're referring to this letter to the.
Yes.
I just had notes that Peter's up there to sign other things as secretary for the, he's secretary of that too, so.
All right. Would you like him to?
If we're actually being Peter as secretary for the agency.
All right. Did anyone see anything in the letter that they had questions on or had issues with?
I only had questions on the building. Because why wouldn't they, if they were building a new building, why wouldn't they have to?
No. It's not a new building.
They're adding on.
They have to enclose the wellhead for vandalism and for weather.
Right.
And it's federally mandated. It's not a building. It's 12 by 13. It's just like a box over the wellhead. If you, I think I thought I gave you pictures.
Is it this box or this box?
Not that box. The box to your right is already there.
Okay.
Oh, well, it's really the left, to your left now. When you're looking at it, it's the big structure. That's there.
That's there.
If you look at the.
Yeah.
If you look at the projection sticking up out of the ground.
Yeah.
That's what they need to cover.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why it's covered with plastic right now.
Extend it over so it covers that.
I'm not sure if they're going to attach it to the building. All I was told is that it's 12 feet by 13 feet. It would make sense to attach it to the building, but I went through all the requirements in an aquifer zone, and I could find nothing that required the agency to sign off on it.
Yeah, that's an aerial.
But it does say in the regulations that if anyone is in an aquifer, even if they don't have a use that's listed as mandatory to be reviewed, they still have to get a letter saying, yep, you don't need it, we looked at it.
Well, now, Jose or Rachel, I forget who, that everything was supposed to go by you first to check and see if it is an aquifer, is that happening?
Yes. Rachel, well, Rachel's gone, so it's kind of up in the air, but Rachel was very good about getting the.
But that procedure should be in line up there. Is that part of the checkoff list, that you, that the aquifer person up there checks it?
Probably not, but we'll get on top of that.
Because that's what we had with the town until somebody called our attention to it.
Also, this board gave Connecticut Water a special use permit for that well facility. I think I attached it to your plans. If I didn't, I can scan it in and give it to you.
There's a deed in here.
Yeah.
But I just didn't know where it was, like.
Yeah.
In the.
It's just.
Powder Hollow.
Yeah. It's just this little thing, and now they've got it covered with a tarp. But we have to protect our water supply unfortunately from.
It's been destroyed and they have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. No, I'm not saying that that's the problem, I just.
They have to pull a building permit if they're going to do it, but they don't.
Is it proposed well number five on the drawing, is that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so what is it that we have to do then, is vote to?
I would say vote to approve sending the letter, so I can close it out.
Is it an authorization they want?
And you're going to sign off on it?
No, Peter is.
Peter should. As you see, Peter signs the minutes and so forth.
Yeah. I wasn't sure, because like I said, I looked at all the past ones, and Jose signed off. But it does make sense for Peter, the secretary, to sign off.
I make a motion to approve and authorize Peter to sign a letter for which a copy dated October 2, 2014, has been provided to us by Virginia Higley, with Peter Falk's name substituted for Chairman Charles Durin.
I think that's a little bit ahead, a little bit ahead of the time. We haven't voted yet on what she wants.
No.
I thought that's what she wants.
All right. I thought you were doing a motion on the letter, but we haven't approved.
I'm approving, authorizing what she's asked for, which is to send the letter.
Yeah, but they said that no regulated activity is defined in Section 4C, and you have to vote on that first, I would think.
Well, if you vote, you could amend the motion to say that since there was no need for an aquifer review by the board, your motion is to approve sending the letter.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to say, because the board feels, the board feels there is no need to define it as per Section 4C 4 of the Enfield Aquifer Protection Regulations.
Okay, that's fine, okay. The motion then is that we find that there is no regulated activity as defined in Section 4C 4 of the Enfield Aquifer Protection Regulations. Any discussion? Hearing non-call or roll?
Chairman Charles Durin.
For.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
For.
Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, for. Commissioner Lori Longi.
For.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
For.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
For.
Commissioner Alan Drynan.
For.
Letter to authorize Peter to sign.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to authorize Peter Falk to sign a letter, a copy of which has been given to us as a draft dated October 2, 2014, with the one change that Peter Falk, secretary, be the signator in place of Charles Durin, chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing non-call or roll?
Chairman Charles Durin.
For.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
For.
Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, for. Commissioner Lori Longi.
For.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
For.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
For.
And Commissioner Alan Drynan.
For.
Okay.
Great. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
Are you staying for the next parts of the meeting, or are you?
Did the board want anything from me?
Well, there was a question that I had later on in the.
Well, if you've got a question, maybe she'll stay. It's not too long.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. I'll be hidden in the audience.
Anyone in the public would like to address the Aquifer Protection Agency at this time? Anyone in the public would like to address the Aquifer Protection Agency at this time? Last call to address the Aquifer Protection Agency. Hearing then, we'll move on. Any new business? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin.
For.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
For.
Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, for. Commissioner Lori Longi.
For.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
For.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
For.
Commissioner Alan Drynan.
For.
Now, we welcome you to a meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for October 2nd, 2014. Will the secretary please take the roll?
Yes.
Chairman Charles Durin.
Present.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
Here.
Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Here.
Commissioner Drynan will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Approval of minutes, July 31, which we do not have yet. So, there must be a, is there a reason? That you know of, or you may not know.
Yeah, there is a, the reason is, we are trying to work out details with the transcription company. I'm going to get into minutes in a few minutes.
Okay.
So I think, hopefully, it'll become a little clearer at that point.
Okay, thanks. Minutes of September 4th. There's no motion on the floor, so you can't discuss.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September 4th of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Now you may discuss.
I saw that they were somewhat cleaned up with the spacing, but I wasn't, I was thinking that there were still some things that were missing that should have been in there. And especially in the sections, when we give our reasons, some of the reasons I didn't think made it to the proper spots.
Anyone else?
I've marked up a copy of mine where the spaces have been deleted by the word processing program, and I can give you a copy of this. It doesn't need to go through each one of them. One comment on page 2 of 23, second paragraph, Mr. Bryanten affirmed that he'd received a burned CD, that should be DVD to be completely accurate. And second one is just a typo on page 6, fourth line down, he said regarding appointing ZEO, it should read its, rather than sits. And then, page 7, I'm not sure how to handle this, and page 7, second paragraph at the bottom, second line from the bottom, Commissioner Longi said it's in Section 5.08. I looked in the zoning regs and didn't find a Section 508, so it may be a typo or some other section that Commissioner Longi was referring to regarding, regarding the ZEO works under the discretion or direction of the commission, rather than board, commission. And I'll give you my comments, probably a couple dozen space emitted typos.
Okay.
I just have just a few, like page 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th line down, that they has run together, they run to. Page 5, you have third paragraph, fourth, third line is because what, is one word. So, you still have this. Page 6, you have. Line 8, the ruling is run together. The next to the last line, commission has, is run together. There's still a lot of.
I marked about two dozen of them.
Oh, you haven't, okay.
Yeah. Those, the ones I marked included the ones you just mentioned.
At page 9, you've got second line up from the bottom, statements were.
Yep.
Okay, those all, all right.
Yes.
I'll let it go then, because there's some more.
I think I got them all, but.
Okay, well, they're still there, so.
So we can.
What's your desire then?
So if we deny them, we get them fixed?
Well, we'll have to.
If we approve them, that we.
Keep them that way, so I don't know what you want.
Okay.
So, well, there's motions to approve, so we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Take the roll.
Again. Chairman Charles Durin. Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard. Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, against. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Against.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
Against.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
Again.
Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Against.
Motion fails, 060, I'm sorry, 700. Motion to September 18th.
Make a motion to accept September 18th minutes of the planning and zoning meeting.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion?
Yep, I have some.
Yes, please.
Okay. On page 13, Commissioner Sarno actually gave the section of the regulations that she felt were important, and it was missing out of there. The reasons of denial, most of the stuff was missing, and that's very important information. Basically, I made all kinds of notes, because we said that the building was occupied and not vacant, and for all other reasons, people brought up that wasn't in our regulations, including the acreage and all of the things. And I don't know if they understand how important it is to state the reasons and get them in the minutes. And then, when.
Went over this with Rachel, and those probably are the most things that if anything develops, should be there. Plus, when the vote is like seven to zeros or whatever, that's all right, because you know who's present. But if there's any vote change, you've got to have the names of the voters, or the ones that voted for and those that voted against.
And when there are reasons for or against, especially if they're against, it might be good, as well as the reason, to actually insert the zoning regulation section number that it refers to, like there's a section number for the five acre limit, and there's another one for the 80%, as opposed to just the statement. That would be a little bit more explicit.
And then, on the next page, when Mr. Ravelis's application came in, I went to the YouTube video today, just because I was pretty positive that I said the restaurant was legal nonconforming, and that some of us would say that the use, you couldn't expand on it, but besides that, it was in the BP zone when liquor wasn't allowed. So the whole first part of the legal nonconforming use wasn't even mentioned in the minutes, and it just mentioned about the zone not being correct. And just for his purposes, and I don't want to mislead them, that they think that that was the only reason. So I think they need to get fixed as well.
I have one final comment, and it's my perennial comment. On the last page, right after, just before next regular meeting, I would like the phrase inserted, these minutes, let's see, a DVD, electronic recording of this meeting is attached and made a part of these minutes. And again, the reason for that is to be consistent with FOIA, to afford the public the opportunity to see what we actually said. Audio recordings in the past indicated what was heard, but these days, we have audiovisual video recordings that show not only what we said, but who said it by looking at it. So I think it's pretty easy to make a DVD from the ETV DVDs that the library has, and I again, think that DVD should just simply be attached to the minutes for the record.
Where should that come up there? Upstairs procedures?
I think we'll revisit it probably, let's see. We're going to touch on that subject when we review the bylaws later in this meeting.
All right.
But we could maybe discuss it then, but I think it's a fairly simple thing to do.
It should be in the procedures upstairs.
And probably preferable to referencing a YouTube video that people would have to go to, that might not exist in 15 years, but the DVD would.
Yep, I said.
Okay. That's a good, yep. Take the roll, I guess, unless somebody else has comments, take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin.
Against.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Against.
Second vice chair Kathleen Sarno, against. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Against.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis.
Against.
Commissioner Charles Lad.
Against.
Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Against.
Staff reports, town attorney was supposed to be here, that says, however, he is not, if he does come in, we can allow for a motion at that time. That's if we aren't in the, he'd have to come after whatever we're doing is closed. You do have his report there in front of you. Any questions for Peter through, or through Peter for the town attorney?
We did just get an email, it may not be appropriate to raise this, because it's so recent.
Oh, it's not necessary at this time.
Okay.
I'll be bringing it up in my report.
Okay.
Zoning enforcement officer has a report here. I think there was questions on the taxi driver that I've heard from, so I don't know if we could hold, I don't know, that's a done deal, I suppose, or isn't it?
It is.
It is.
I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
For Enfield drivers, the drivers have their own cars that are elsewhere, but it's a home occupation, I guess.
Well, and the question I wanted to ask, I guess, and I was hoping that Ginny would stay, is in the notes here, it said there was a home occupation on file from 2005, but we know that this house recently sold and closed, so the home occupation would be no longer valid for the property that we all were asked about. So, even though there was a lot of detail about it, my thing was, is if the home occupation was from 2005, then they didn't come in for this particular address, and maybe, and in our regulations, it says, only residents of the premises are employed, and no more than two non-residential are employed, but they're talking about three other drivers, so it doesn't even comply with our home occupation stuff.
That would be correct.
So, okay, so it's, we don't know where it stands, I guess, is the thing. So.
So we'll look into that.
Okay. And then, the, talking about the.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to see where that is.
It's in the zoning enforcement comprehensive report on page 2.
Page 2, top of page 2.
Well, I was took mine off the highlights.
1162 Enfield Street.
Yes.
Could you make sure your mic is on?
Right.
It is on. Can't hear me? If I fall a little closer.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little bit better. And the other thing was, is the home occupation in our statute, in the regulations, says that they should be reported to the commission monthly, but we did receive them for August, but we didn't get anything for September. for August, but we didn't get anything for September, and I don't remember getting anything for July, so I was just curious, and that is what made me wonder, is because.
So, reports for August and September.
We have August.
I'm sorry.
We don't have July or September.
July and September, okay.
It's a much more comprehensive report than what we received last time. Any further questions? I know that was one that we discussed before.
I, I do. On the, Jay Gumbos.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the truck has been moved, but it's just been moved from one spot to another. It's, it's a little less of an eyesore, you know, it's not quite right in the middle, but it's still a big advertisement on that truck. So I, what is, what does this mean, November request for viol.
Notice of violation.
Okay. So they.
An O V is notice of violation.
Okay.
Okay, so what is the R request for?
Voluntary compliance.
Okay.
So I, did they comply? Letter sent required.
No.
Apparently not, if the truck's still there.
Well, the truck was moved from where it originally was, so it was just moved from the middle over to the, a little bit more, but it still has the advertisement and everything for their business on it, so it, was it removed from site?
Not that I, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
I said it wasn't.
Oh, it wasn't, yes.
Wasn't, yeah.
The other thing with that business too, is the picnic tables, he hasn't come in, so they should be removed to one, at least, I know there's been one out there for a long time.
I understand the food's good, but.
Okay.
Okay, the others are, I, I hope who, well, that they continue on with this. Okay, any, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to blight report. I see it's grass season.
Yes, and it's much better. I have to compliment when, 100 times better than the last blight report. I mean, it's highlighted, and you could read it all in one thing, and kudos to whoever redid it, it's great.
Okay, moving on, and we get to, oh, interim director, well, we get to Peter.
I only have one item, and that's to discuss the minutes, the minute situation, so if, if I may, I'd like to pass out what the town attorney sent to us today, and, and go over this with you.
Sure.
So, in a memo addressed to me from Kevin DeNeen, town attorney, issues, what are the contents of the minutes, whether electronically stored versions of minutes, be it a DVD, YouTube, et cetera, can be used or to supplement type minutes, whether the following statement is accurate, if it is not, in the zoning regulations, it is not allowed. So short answer to those three questions are, the contents of the minutes are provided in Robic's rules and other requirements provided in the Freedom of Information Act. Two, although an electronically stored version of a meeting may not substitute for minutes, it may be used to create minutes, provided there is also compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. And the answer to number three is yes. I won't get into.
If you would, please.
You want me to continue?
Footnote number one, no, I'm just saying footnote number one there, is just what I said before.
The according to Robic's rules of order?
No, no, footnote down at the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Example, the vote was four in favor, commissioners A, B, C, and D, and three opposed, commissioners X, Y, and Z.
We finally got Rachel doing it, and then it's been disappearing.
Okay, so, attached to this, actually, he goes on, onto the back to continue some information on, on minutes. But what I can, what I attach to this, to his letter, is minutes that were done in, back in 2010.
Uh-huh.
And these minutes are about 16 pages long, and they are not verbatim minutes, they are just a discussion of what took place.
That's what, yeah.
With all the appropriate motions, who made the motions.
That's all that we need.
So, we have an understanding, if this is what you're looking for, we have an understanding of what you're looking for.
Yeah.
And we are actually going to be interviewing a couple of recording secretaries on Monday.
Right, okay.
So, so that we can get somebody in here, take the minutes, set up in this fashion. The discussion with Kevin DeNeen was, if, if we ever got to the point where, you know, we had to defend ourselves, you know, in court, that we can use the DVD or the audio to transcribe those, those transcriptions.
Yes.
That's always the case, it's been. Peter, the only thing wrong with these is, is, number one, it doesn't say who voted, as it's supposed to.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it also does not, in, in some cases, doesn't give the reasons.
Right.
And I don't, I don't know why, and I know these were approved too, but we're supposed to give reasons.
I think we're learning from, it's the process, you know.
And when someone's hired, you know, you can have training with them, that this is a good example, plus these other things.
Right.
I, I would like to add, though, that, that I think, as I said before, a DVD would be good, not only for the record, but also to attach the minutes, and, and here's the reason, probably back in the day when, when the regulations were written, that minutes were, were required along with a recording, those may have been back in the days of reel, reel tape and live television broadcasts, but in today's modern age, a DVD or perhaps a, a slip drive, a stick drive can contain more information, both audio and visual, and it's better than audio, because with the audio video, like a DVD, you can see who said what, as opposed to just hearing and guessing who said what, so.
Right.
I think that should be made, again, part of the minutes as well, so that it's right there in the file.
Okay.
And a DVD preferable to, in addition to, if necessary, but preferable to just audio.
Got it. So, so again, we, you know, we, we hear you, we understand that, that transcription plus is not working out, and we are, well, we hope to have somebody here for the next meeting.
Okay, good, great.
Okay. Any questions for Peter? Okay. Moving on, at this point in the meeting, planning and zoning commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone that's present, provided no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission? Come forward, please, again, name and address, Mrs. Mullin.
Maureen Mullin, 1625 King Street. I came tonight because I had been looking for the agenda for this meeting. I was at the library Tuesday evening, after the Friends of the Library meeting, so it was after eight o'clock, and I checked the calendar for October, and I looked for the agenda for this meeting, I couldn't find it. Now, I don't know if I was looking in the wrong places, I looked under the website, I looked for the calendar, turned it to October, I didn't see anything listed for the meetings, and then I went to the agenda and the minutes, I even went back to see if there was anything that was previously put in on those minutes from before. I didn't see anything, and I didn't know. I know sometimes I'll see it in the J I, now I'm getting it, I subscribe to the paper, so I won't miss anything, but you never know what's going to happen, so I just wondered if other people who might be just using their computers or just going online, had had the same problem or not. I don't know how long in advance the information is supposed to be there, I didn't know what time, certain hearings were going to be held tonight, so that's what I was looking for.
I don't know if you have to.
So I thought I'd just make a comment.
I'm looking it up now.
Okay.
The agenda.
It's on now, I believe it's on.
Barbara would know the time limit.
I didn't check it today, but, you know, when I came to the office, everybody was very helpful, the agenda, of course, was right there. I don't know when it was actually posted online, but when I checked it, Tuesday night after eight o'clock at the library.
I usually get Q notify, and I didn't see it actually come through.
I don't have Q. I don't have a computer at home, I go to the library or the senior center or wherever.
Does anyone?
But then I, I heard that there was.
Barbara's saying she did on Monday, so we'll have to find out why they weren't posted, if they're.
Well, I heard that there were fewer staff, so perhaps that had something to contribute to it, but everybody who was there was very helpful.
No, she, Barbara's the one who'd send it out.
And what does it have to be, 24 hours ahead?
No, no, I don't know for a.
24 hours in the town clerk's office.
In the town clerk's office, there's nothing on putting it in public, so I don't know.
Well, that's why I wondered if people were checking only online, you know, when would they expect to be able to look to find it? Because I'm not at the library every day.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can, you can get on Q notify, that's the way I get it, if you go online and register with Q notify, you get.
She doesn't have a computer.
Oh, sorry, okay, okay.
I will say that the, the town is working on, on a new website, and it's possible that it got lost in translation, but I don't know, we're, we're usually pretty good about posting agendas.
Yeah, I couldn't get on, I couldn't get on the GIS maps the other day either and stuff, so I do know that they are doing some modifications or whatever to your website, so. Like you said, there's a glitch now and then.
Anyone else would like to address the commission? Anyone else would like to address the commission? Last call. Okay, moving on, commissioners' correspondence, several from Capital Region, you'll notice we're there, and the town of Windsor, and also down below, Summers notified us that there are buildable areas. I don't know what that would be.
I see one that's Windsor pertaining to changing zoning regulations regarding signs. Do we have access to what those are? We can see the title, what they're talking about, how, if we wanted to take a look at it, are they available in the office? No?
No, you get.
At their town hall, okay.
What you get is similar to the letter, for example, from Windsor Locks pertaining to unregistered vehicles. You can get it to, from CROG, CROG will give them to you. CROG, as I told Rachel once, will do, will send you, like, if you're looking for certain regulations, they'll send you those regulations that they have on file from other towns. So sometimes it saves going outside or writing your own, you can, which we've done several times, is use the good parts of several to write, write our own. I looked at this one, and we were talking about unregistered vehicles, and we're supposedly getting some from that outside agency. Windsor Locks is also working on site plans and special use permits, so I don't know, but that's about it from that kind of correspondence. Anything from commissioners that they want attended to?
I, I do. I just noticed on this, the town of Enfield, Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is misspelled and my address is incorrect, it's the old address, so, okay, thanks, Barbara.
Any further?
Yeah, maybe monthly I get a CROG email that includes attachments for us to read if we want to, and I forward them, I did this evening, I assume that's adequate, I'll keep doing that as I get them, just forward them to everybody.
I saw those as well, and make sure they're in the packet for the next time.
Okay.
The other is that you do have correspondence from, from Commissioner Drynan, which he sent to Peter, then it's in your packet, and we'll be talking about that later.
One other thing I did get, let's see, the town did put out a couple of email blasts about things coming up, one is the, apparently next Wednesday, well, apparently next Tuesday night is the Thompsonville Talk that Courtney sent to interested parties, and then I had, I had noted earlier that the next night, October 8th, early in the summer, there was announcement of citizens academy class schedule, if that's, and I assume that's still ongoing the next night, Wednesday, October 8th, is pertinent to us, that's the class schedule for planning buildings and permits, so I intended to come to that, so both of those, Tuesday and Wednesday are still on, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And what about the November 1st? There was a, another event that they talked about on November 1st, it was an all-day legal workshop with Mark Brans.
Go ahead.
You're talking about the land use academy?
Yes.
Yeah, um, did you want to sign up for that?
Yes.
What date is that?
I will send you an email.
It's November 1st, it's on a Saturday, and I can't remember where it was, but I did definitely want to go.
Could you send out a notification to the rest of the commission, so they could take a look at it?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Anything else? The, the other thing is a dedication, and I forget the date, for the work that Ashen Nuntuk or the Beautification Committee have done on, around the pond and planters.
October.
20th, I think.
It's on Monday.
20th?
Yes. Hold on a minute, I'll make sure.
And the pond is really looking great, it's what was originally on the pond plans years ago, and finally, I guess they're getting funds, and it's really, really looking good, with the fountains down there, the fences are down, the brush is cleaned up, and if you haven't seen the pond, you really should go down and take a look. And they have made planters, apparently, Ashen Nuntuk, and they're going to dedicate them on that Monday.
Yeah, that's correct, it is, it is the 20th.
It's on 10 o'clock. Okay, anything further? Hearing none, we'll move on to bond releases. 2379, and I think now that we have this email, if you'll read it, from John Kabobo. It has gone up, because it's 867, which I, this is why we always do, do that, and I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve release of the bond related to public hearing 2379 in the amount of $1,408.67 per a memorandum from John Kabobo dated September 24th, 2014.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Chairman Charles Durin.
Four.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno, four. Commissioner Lori Longi.
Four.
Commissioner Nicholas Lefakis.
Four.
Commissioner Charles Ladd.
Four.
Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Four.
Okay, moving on then, to the next bond release, which is 1547. Again, I've spotted a problem, and John recommends a release if we have waived the requirement for a professional engineer to certify the improvements have been installed in accordance with the PZC approved plans, we haven't waived anything. Actually, you can. plans. We haven't waived anything. Actually, you can't, so I don't know.
Apparently, June 19th, 2014, there was a report on minor modifications on ASBelt of SPR 1547. Commissioner Fogg made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Ladd, to allow the project to move forward with a PE-signed letter after completion of construction to satisfy the condition. And we have that letter in our file.
Which, though? Yeah, but he says we can release it if we have approved plans that are certified, that everything is signed by an engineer.
We have the ASBelt and the engineered plans.
They're signed? Well, I... See, that's what I don't. We don't have anything that says that they have that. He says to release it, but he hasn't seen it, so, and he's the one.
Yeah.
It should have gone to him, I would have thought.
If the PZ has waived the requirements for the professional engineer to certify that the improvements have been installed in accordance with the P... So this is saying, did we require a professional engineer to go?
They always do, yeah. They have to sign and seal that it's done.
Oh, well, then, why would we waive it?
I... That's what he's saying. If we haven't waived it, then we can't relea... He says we can release it if we've waived it.
But we don't generally do that, so, right.
Oh, we don't.
And he's saying that they need professional engineer approval that the plans have been completed, not a professional engineer approval of the plans, but that they've been done.
The ASBelt is...
That's what he has.
Yeah, it's the ASBelt, that's what you're on.
So, from R. Levesque Associates, "At the time of inspection, a thorough review of the installed landscaping plantings was not possible. It is our understanding that the town is establishing a landscape bond for approximately one year to ensure a successful and complete establishment of plantings. Please refer to the aforementioned plans for further detail and contact our office with any questions or concerns. I do hereby certify that any variations identified above from the original approved construction plans include excluding, including, the stated expectations constitute no substantial impact to the original design," and it's stamped.
So that's an approval of the construction plans, but not an approval of the ASBelts that say that the work was done?
Well, they're...
This correspondence shall serve as certification that the site construction work on the above referenced site plan has been completed in general conformance. The inspection of premise was conducted on March 27th, 2014, and an ASBelt survey has been produced for the site by William R. Palmberg and Sons LLC, Land Surveyor, entitled Improvement Location Plan Prepared for the O'Leary Group, 699 Enfield Street, dated 9/27/2013.
But... And is there an ASBelt?
Is that a letter?
Yeah.
That's a letter you're reading, right?
Yes.
But...
But it's not stamped.
That's not the... That's not the plan. He's saying, do we have the plan on?
Plan is here.
If that's... Okay, is it stamped and sealed?
Yes, it is stamped. Both of them are stamped.
And is that the ASBelt or the construction plan? Can you tell?
It should say ASBelt on it if it is.
Improvement Location Plan.
I don't know if that's pre-construction plan or after construction verification that the work's been done.
I mean, an ASBelt is basically as built, and states, usually the engineer states on there that that is the date that they went out and are certifying that everything's complete.
What's the date of that plan, Peter, the latest revision to it, or the date of that plan?
Says 4/1/2014.
4/1/2014. I don't know. The date that... I don't know when this project went in.
John has said an ASBelt survey has been submitted, but then he goes on to say, imply that the ASBelt survey wasn't certified by a professional engineer is the inference I would draw from this.
Can we find that out?
Well, the other letter from John that we have down the back says, "The applicant is supposed to submit an ASBelt signed and sealed by the professional engineer who inspected the site during construction, certifying all site improvements have been installed according to approved plans and specs before bonds are released. Please forward me a copy of the certified ASBelt." So he apparently has the same...
Right.
He's still writing this. "I will re-inspect the site after the certified ASBelt is submitted to make sure the stop sign and enclosed dumpsters pads have been installed." But that's back in... That's January 24th, 2014. And then his answer up above is to Friday, April 28th, "As requested, I re-inspected the subject site and found the gates are installed. Have you received the properly certified ASBelt plan as required?" So he's saying in one place before that he's got to see it, and up above, he still hasn't seen it. And really, this one dated September 26th, he's still saying unless we've waived it, or if we've waived it, then release it, but he apparently still hasn't seen it.
He says an ASBelt survey has been submitted, but not an ASBelt plan that he's been able to look at and inspect, so I'm not sure what he's seen.
So we'll make a motion that... Do we make a motion now?
We're in a motion.
Oh, we are in a motion? Oh.
Yeah, once the gates are installed.
Okay.
Even Wednesday, February 12th, "Once the gates are installed and we receive the properly certified ASBelt as required, I can give a positive reply for CO insurance issuance." So... Then he says, "Friday, April 25th, I re-inspected site. Have you received the properly certified ASBelt?"
ASBelt plans.
So he's keep asking for it.
He's telling us. So... All right. Should we revise the motion, or do we?
Well, was the motion to approve?
Yes.
Then you have to deny it. You have to... Well, you vote no, or you can vote yes. I'm not telling you how to vote. If you want to release it without John's plans, but he's...
Did a motion get made? I think one was begun, but then we got into discussion. I don't think a motion was made.
No motion made?
Or seconded.
Okay. Well, we're discussing, I guess, then.
Just before you move on...
Well, you have to make a motion to approve anyway.
Before you move on, there... I mean, there's a letter of transmittal here from the engineer, saying that it was received by us on May 30th.
What was?
This is what he's calling an ASBelt. So he says revised improved location plan recorded as built.
Okay, but it's not saying ASBelt on there, so that means that they might have moved things, so it's different than our approved plans?
John's still got to check on that.
Okay, I will have a conversation with John, myself, tomorrow.
Yeah, because we're going to go around.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table action.
Oh, no, no.
You can't?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
There's nothing on the... Actually, we... Yeah. Okay.
You want you to approve it?
No, we didn't. I started to make a motion, but we stopped.
I think you make one to approve it, and then we didn't.
Oh, okay. All right, I make a motion to approve the release of bond on SPR 1547 in the amount of $2,500 for an erosion bond and $17,500 for a site restoration bond as described in various emails from John Kabibbo, the latest, which is dated September 26th, 2014.
Second.
Motion's made seconded. Any discussion? Okay.
Chairman Charles Durren?
Against.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Against.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno?
Against.
Commissioner Lori Longi?
Against.
Commissioner Nick LaFakis?
Against.
Commissioner Charles Ladd?
Against.
And Commissioner Alan Drynan?
Against.
Motion to table, then. They actually probably should have been done before. All right, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to table action on SPR 1547 and the release of bonds on that project in the amount of $2,500 for erosion bond and $17,500 for site restoration bond.
Second.
I'll be back.
Again, with the real call.
Yes, real call.
Chairman Charles Durren?
Four.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Table.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno?
Table.
Commissioner Lori Longi?
For the table.
Commissioner Nick LaFakis?
For the table.
Commissioner Charles Ladd?
For the table.
And Commissioner Alan Drynan?
For tabling.
Yes, we're saying, just keep it on the agenda. Okay, that takes care of that. Public hearing continued from September 18th. Don't need to read the legal notice, but this is public hearing 2801. Zoning map changed to MFHD, properly located at King Street and 11M District Map 16 Lot 1, Number 108, World Properties LLC, applicant owner. It says must close by November 6th. That's an incorrect date. You've still got... You only have 35 days.
You're right. It should be October 16th. That would have to ask.
Also, October 16th is really too late, too, because John emailed me and told me that you don't count...
The terminal days.
Yeah, terminal days. Well, you've talked to him, too?
Yes.
Okay.
However, we have a... The applicant is not here tonight. We have a letter from the applicant's requesting to postpone, or I'm sorry to...
May I have that, please?
Continue the hearing. I'm going to hand it out now.
I was wondering where they were.
This is... We've received a letter from Attorney Fahy, addressed to the chair.
Same.
Dear Chairman Durren, it's the applicant understanding East Windsor Town Planner Lori Whitten and Enfield's new interim town planner, John Pagini, would like tonight's scheduled public hearing continued to October 16th to allow her to discuss her application with East Windsor PCC at its October 14th, 2014 meeting. This would allow her to include her commission input in a report to your commission. I have discussed this request with the applicant. We respectfully request that you continue this hearing until your meeting scheduled for October 16th. October 16th is the 25th day of our 35 days.
If East Windsor doesn't meet till the 14th...
Let me continue. Please also be advised that based on the plant of staff's concern about loss of available IM zone land, we are asking the commission to consider a modification of our zone change request as illustrated in the three attachments to this letter.
Where are they?
You have...
We have the attachments.
Okay. As you can see, the modification proposes 69 acres remain IM, which we believe will accommodate up to approximately 200,000 square feet of IM space. The remaining 65 acres would be reserved for multifamily development under MFHD regulations. Please be sure that Lori Whitten and others you deem appropriate receive copies of this modification request and exhibit so they can comment on this in a timely fashion. Since you will be receiving this modified request this evening, have not received a final report from East Windsor, we think it best that we continue our presentation on October 16th after you have had an opportunity to review the new material. Thank you for your cooperation. Very truly yours, Thomas W. Fahy, Jr. And this was received at our office 6:33 PM on October 2nd. Just before the meeting.
Just before the meeting, correct.
Okay.
So are we going to get copies of the attachments so we know what they are tonight, or no?
No. Well, we were going to put them into your packet. If you'd like to see them, we can provide those to you.
Well, if I have them, like I did with the last presentation that he gave us, the letters and all, I took them home that night because it gives me some time to look at them.
Sure, can you email them?
We'll make some copies while we're still meeting, and we'll get them to you.
Email them to us when...
Could email them to you as well.
Email's fine for me. I don't know what...
Yeah, Charlie apparently wants them.
Do they include drawings, modification of drawings, so we can't really...
There are...
Full vellum size?
No.
Whatever they are, please just, if you can get them tonight, that would be great.
They're eight by 11 attachments. They also included full sets, but there are... But there's not enough of those for everyone, so.
I have a concern with... It sounds like a major change. I have a concern about, do we have to send this back out to CROG? And East Windsor will be looking at something that we don't have. Will they have to review it again?
Yes.
And is there time to do that between now and October 16th?
You'll have to give us a further extension, no.
Yeah, October 16th won't make it.
It's not enough time.
There won't be enough time. John will be here then, and actually, John's working on it now, except he had a death in the family, and there's also illness in the family, so he's got a double barrel.
I don't think that we should review on October 16th if Windsor isn't going to meet until the 14th. We won't have a chance to see their comments.
John will take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, I have to open the public. Any questions first from the commission? Okay. Anyone in the public, although it's not meeting tonight, it is legally advertised as a meeting tonight. Anyone would like to make comments for or against? Please go forward. Again, regulations require a name and address, even though you've been here many times, most of you.
It's Maureen Mullin, 1625 King Street. I brought my neighbor Betty with me this afternoon. We didn't get to P&amp;Z until 4:30. I had been there earlier to look at another project, but I brought Betty with me, and we couldn't find the chart. We couldn't find the chart to review anything that had been added since the last time.
There's been nothing added except whatever came in tonight at 6:30.
Correct.
Well, that's what we wanted to see, if there was anything added.
There apparently has, and we haven't seen it.
But there wasn't until then, but that we didn't know, so we didn't have access to.
The only thing we have is what's up on the board, Mrs. Mullin.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission? Please go forward.
Brian Ellis, 7 King Court. With the land here, and I watch it on TV, it's pretty extensive with all the lawyers and stuff coming in. Years ago, the commission, this landowner, asked to put housing behind 1328 around the bend there, down on Corporate Drive, and you guys denied them putting housing in back then. So now, you wanted to keep industrial land, one, in the town of Enfield because it was getting short and you was have it down there. Well, that end of that property, Corporate Drive, was going to be slated to have another big building down there. Well, that never happened. So now let's go to the medical facility, okay? It's pretty good. It's going to be kind of neighborly, pretty good, and have something in the back. But now, with this change, how many changes are we going to keep giving somebody when you guys mandate things in here and you have to bend over backwards for somebody that keeps trying to fit in here to put this property in? It's not a fit at all. On the end of King Court, there is wetlands, and on the hill, and on number 115, and the house just to the west of it, there is a groove off the back of the side of the hill. There's a spring there, and it cuts down between the two houses, and the town had to put a catch basin in there to catch all the water. All those houses are slabbed down there. So where they appropriate, you can have all these engineers and whatever they want, but they're not going to divert the water because Mother Nature's going to take it. Well, the town did a fantastic job at keeping out of those four houses down below, keeping the water out of their slab houses. That's all that's down there. Not basement slab. So they diverted it down there, and they also fixed the street in the center... So they diverted it down there, and they also fixed the street in the center of King Court, of all the water coming off the center, it doesn't wash out the center. So kudos to our highway department fixing that problem. If they make this road go behind the houses, you're gonna disrupt the whole process what we have already fixed, put in there. So, with you guys being our defense of all the residents down there, we're living in an area that nobody even thinks about us. It's like we're almost in East Windsor, oh, it's King Court, you know, we had the police department come down there, we had no problems down there, but now we see something here that could alleviate a problem. Expensure to the town, the school board, you know, we're closing schools, making things combined, now we're gonna put housing in there, what type of housing? I do believe you said on record state housing. So, okay, put state housing in there, but you guys already told them once, no, we're not putting housing in there, we need industrial land, and then, okay, industrial medical, okay, so we're making, you wanna bring jobs into the town, employ people in the town. There's plenty of housing, there's plenty of things around town to build other housing, but you're changing the zoning to fit somebody's needs when they know that, how much, how many times you can go to the commission and say, I want this, I want this, I want this? And for them to come in before and hand you guys paperwork from a lawyer saying, it's putting you guys on the spot for all the residents, you guys do a heck of a job, you go through a lot of paperwork, and for a lawyer not to come here in person, or the people that wants this applicant, is a shame, because if they cared about it, they would be here tonight, just like the residents. A lot of people in King Court don't know what's going on with this because the sign is on Route 5, it's in, right in between, and it looks like, okay, Mr. Amesworth passed away, okay, Amesworth must be selling their property, but that's not true. It's a small piece between Amesworth House and, and it just shows that there, so which opens up a whole can here. You know, and this property's gonna butt up against Connecticut Mulch, I don't think Kurt's gonna wanna deal with, you know, neighbors building houses down there, then that's gonna open up in a can worms and loud noise and everything like that, all they got dust, and there's a ton of wetlands, and there's wetlands that cut down through and the King Court, oh, we can add on down there, we can go through, but it's all, it's all wet, and I just don't understand how somebody can just keep coming and asking when you guys already told them once years ago, on the other side of Corporate Drive around the bend for housing, and they're like, no, too much wetlands, we're not doing it, we need industrial land to stay in Enfield, and I think industrial land, land or the medical land that you guys had put in February, okay, let's work on that, bring it in corporate buildings like that, let's bring jobs in Enfield. We got plenty of houses in Enfield if people wanna move into them because we got foreclosures. People are looking for jobs, let's bring jobs in Enfield. If you keep changing this here, we lost another part of Enfield where we could bring somebody in for jobs. If we get rid of this land towards residential for people living there, we just gave out a section of people not having jobs in Enfield, and I do believe Enfield wants to create jobs and come in, so remarkable, if he does his homework to come in for industrial land, industrial medical now, which he has changed, and you guys have done your deed about switching this, but if he changed it again, I don't think it's right.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the commission? Please go forward again, ma'am, and name an address.
My name is Barbara Costas and I live at number nine, King Court. I have lived there for over 60 years. I have watched that go from just the upper part of 22 houses to the fulfilling, the fulfillment of 44 houses. The last 22 were made for slabs because of the wetness of the land, it was unable to build cellars for them. At the time that the second group was built, the street from the center, from the top part down, was washed out probably six times. They kept trying to get the person to, that was the builder, to rebuild the road, and they couldn't find him, he finally found him in jail, so ended up that the town had to repay of fixing it correctly and putting in water pipes to hold the road so that it would be stable enough to be able to be driven on. My children wanted to have a play yard at the end of the road, and it was impossible because if it was a heavy rain, it was like a pond, it was not just water, it was, and the houses from, I would say the four houses down from the end, often had generators pumping water out of their backyards when there was heavy rains. This is, and also, my son used to drive, used to ride a horse, the Amesworth horse, around the back in there, and there was literally ponds in, down there where they're planning to build, so I don't know how you can establish a building or a group of buildings there and have it, have it work, I mean, I don't know, they'd be floating, either that or you have to put them up on stilts or something. But that's, I mean, that's what I've seen, and as I said, I've been there 60 years, and we've been unable to use it or have anything to do with it. My son also is in landscaping, and the one that was driving the horses, and he was down there, and he was trying to clear the land for some people and it was impossible, he said it was just totally, it was just like ponds, and there's a couple of streams that go right through it also. So, I just thought I would tell you what it's up against.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to address the commission? Anyone else would like to address the commission? Hearing then, motion to, continues to, well, what's the next meeting? Do you want?
60. But what about?
Six.
It is Oct.
CROG.
Well, I said to Rachel when she proposed it, that it probably wouldn't happen because, especially at busy times of the year, you can't hold these people up, and especially with this where you're on a time limit, you can't.
But aren't not, we, didn't you say earlier that CROG would need to answer to this new plan and we haven't sent it to them yet?
That's correct.
So that could be a problem as well.
You're gonna have, you've gotta have, oh, you've gotta go to the next meeting because that's all we have from him. You can't go beyond it.
Right, you're gonna have to ask for an extension.
No matter what, no matter what people desire upstairs, the commission is bound by law, we can't just say.
I understand that, it'll be on the agenda, but at that point in time, you're gonna have to ask for an extension.
Right.
Well, we don't ask for an extension, the applicant does, is that right?
Well, we have to ask him for an extension, if he refuses to give one, you have to vote.
But if the applicant asks for an extension, we don't have to approve it, we can vote on that.
Correct.
That's right.
So it wouldn't be us asking for the extension if the applicant wants to apply for an extension?
John will be here to give you advice at the time.
Right, you're essentially asking them if it's okay to extend the meeting.
He's already given you this extension, you didn't have to ask him, but next time, if you wanna extend it, you'll have to, he's got a choice, either give you an extension or not give you an extension, then you got a choice.
Okay, I do have one question though, because I wasn't on the board when he talked about the history when it was denied at residential, I guess I would be interested in looking at some of the minutes of seeing what, why it was denied.
What, one thing that has happened, and I don't know if we have it with this, I don't recall.
We were getting history, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
And we did get.
We asked Rachel for history of the area.
Okay, I mean, that's something I can pass on to John, because he's gonna be handling the applications going forward.
Right.
Right, but, but I don't know if he's ready for this, while you got time, someone upstairs maybe could.
But you're asking in general that each case have a history?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was part of the procedure too. I don't know if Rachel has it in her notes, she may have it, if she has it, you still have her computer information, okay. So, a motion would be in order to continue to the hearing until the 16th of October?
Make a motion to continue public hearing 2801 to the October 16th meeting.
Motion's made, and seconded, take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin.
For.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
For.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno, for. Commissioner Lori Longi.
For.
Commissioner Nick LaFakas.
For.
Commissioner Charles Ladd.
For.
And Commissioner Alan Drynan.
For.
Okay, no public hearings, so you ready for this one, Kathy?
I'm ready.
Okay, hold on.
I don't have a legal notice, so.
Okay, we'll dig one out for you.
Somewhere.
I got them, I just gotta find them.
There you go.
Charles got it.
My binder doesn't flip fast. Uh, yes, I better have it.
I have them.
26, oh, six, this is up here.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, October 2nd, beginning at 7 o'clock PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. Concerning.
Concerning 20.
Public hear.
278902.
278902, site plan modifications to relocation dumpster enclosure located at 25 Hazard Avenue. Paramount Realty Services, applicant Paramount Commons at Enfield LLC.
Okay. Wait until everybody gets on page.
02.
Well, it's there, they didn't hold an ART on this, fire marshal had no concerns because it didn't change his original approval, and it doesn't impact the fire department. Traffic safety engineer had no problems, and the town engineer said he had no engineering concerns, so that should take care of that part of it. The only question I will say is on Exhibit 16, whenever, who comes down to approval, don't read what is there because it pertains to a Class 3 liquor permit, it's not what they're asking for. The second page is incorrect. All right, if, you will, sir, if you'll identify yourself and tell us, explain your project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Josh Agnats, I am with BL Companies, we are the engineers who prepared this modification application. We also prepared the original special use permit for the site. Like to also introduce Josh Swirling in the front row, Josh is with Bowler Engineering, and he's here also to answer any questions you guys might have, and particularly as it relates to the architecture and the operations of the site. I'd like to provide a little background as to what has brought us here this evening. As many of you recall, this project was approved before your commission back in March, and there were a number of conditions to that approval. In the coming weeks, we prepared the, we satisfied those conditions and submitted at the end of June, the signature drawings, and we were moving ahead with the construction. At the end of July, we met with the planning and zoning office and the contractors for a pre-construction meeting, and it was at that meeting that it was realized that the dumpster enclosure had on it a roof structure that caused the, that portion of the enclosure to qualify as a building, thus being subject to the front yard setback requirements. So, we waited a little while, and we were given word by the zoning office that the best, the appropriate remedy for this situation is to come before you and present a modification application. So, what I have here, and what is before you on the desk, is a plan with the approved layout on top, and on bottom, our proposed layout, which shifts the enclosure and the accompanying infrastructure seven feet north. Additional changes to the site design as a result of this shift include a restriping of one of the parking spaces, we will be reducing the parking count on site by one space, the site will remain in excess of the parking regulations. Another change is relocating the pedestrian access to the dumpster south of the enclosure. As Chairman Durin mentioned, the fire marshal, traffic safety, planning office, and town engineer have reviewed, and they take no exceptions to this modification, and we feel that it is a net good, it's a, it's a win-win for all, and we hope you feel the same way. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I had questions just about, and I know that this is kind of after the fact, but the plan originally had the construction fencing, which overtook a lot of the parking in that particular mall area, and I'm assuming all that construction fencing is gonna be removed, but your timeline of when the project is gonna be done is, I'm hoping before the holiday season, which is the biggest part of the mall, so I'm just trying to find out what the timeline of construction is, just for future, I think that the board, our board has to take that in consideration.
Okay, we can check with the contractor and find out exactly what the construction schedule is, my understanding, and Josh, feel free to jump in if, if there's, if it's different. The project should be substantially complete by the holidays, they're looking to open the site early February.
Okay.
There's, there's actually a requirement within the deal structure itself that Chick-fil-A do all of the, the major site work, if you will, prior to the holiday season, and then scale everything back.
Okay, because I noticed just myself, I was at the mall and the parking is getting tighter and tighter, and.
They're in a rush to get all of that work done as soon as possible to be able to scale it back, just for that reason.
Right, okay, because I know it's a learning experience for us, we sometimes get complaints from public for certain things, and when you're in a busy mall like that and the parking is shrinking, and we know we're getting the parking back, but during construction, I think if we had realized that there were so many parking spots gonna be used for construction, that would be something in the future I think we would have to really look at, especially the holiday season.
I think both the property owner and their tenants made it abundantly clear that they share that concern.
Durin too, okay. Now, I had a couple of questions for Peter, like conditions, just, because again, we noticed the things that were not right, but in the original modification, there was a condition about the approval not being for, that the gentleman's warehouse had to be removed in order for this one to go forward. Did that ever get removed, because I didn't see it on the conditions here, and we wouldn't wanna take this off the conditions if that never got happened.
These conditions pertain just to this.
Well, they pertain to this, but there was conditions in the original approval that.
They had to be removed.
They had to be removed.
Because they hadn't been removed yet, they still would be filed in the clerk's office, I think.
Right, so that, that was just a question.
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, and then I noticed under the general conditions, we had made note that we wanted to change that, where it says use site or structure, and this condition was totally different than any other condition. So, it would be number nine.
Which number?
Nine. Nine.
Question for clarification, on, on your map, you're taking, not only remove, changing this, but you're removing the roof, because on your map it says the eight-foot-high roof structure is now outside setback line and then it says eight-foot-high refuse enclosure without roof, so this enclosure is not having a roof?
The, the enclosure portion of that structure does not have a roof.
All right, and apparently the original one had a roof.
No.
To clarify, there, the refuse area is open to the air itself. There is a small man door that's, measures roughly nine and a half by eight and a half feet on, that has a roof on it.
It says it's a roof structure that is outside the setback line.
Right, so that nine and a half by eight and a half small box attached to the trash enclosure, which is used for storage.
It has a roof.
Has a roof. And that's what we're pushing outside the setback. The other, the remaining portion of the dumpster enclosure where the actual trash is, is open to the air.
Okay. Any further questions? Well, you have to work them. Where I get them?
We have to know about this condition, whether or not.
Condition nine.
Why don't you put it on then?
Okay.
In, in compliance with the previous approval, that the gentleman's warehouse approval has to be removed.
Okay. Yes.
But they still should check on that, Peter.
Absolutely.
Because that was, that was a concern of the planner when we first did it, was the fact that that was still a go and you could end up with both.
On, on behalf of the property owners, I would like to share that the men's warehouse project is so far in the rearview mirror.
That doesn't make any difference because it would affect-
It's parking.
It's parking and it's a wetlands, I mean, that's why the Chick-fil-A had the big, well, container under the building or under the parking.
All of your stormwater, because when, when, they already got an approval for the gentleman's warehouse on the other side of Bob's, but the contingency was that this approval would go forward as long as they removed the other one, because there wouldn't be enough parking for both to go forward.
There's the parking, there's the water.
Yeah, and there was stormwater and stuff, so.
So.
So, just, just to clarify, that would be condition fifteen?
That, that had to be removed for this to go forward.
Right, I understand that.
If it has it, they've got to get out and enforce it.
Okay, do you, but you want it added to the list of conditions?
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Because if we don't do it now, we won't be able to.
Understood, and then what was the issue with condition nine? I missed that.
Oh, okay, it said this approval is for the specific modification identified in the application, any change in the nature of this modification is what was written, but we had the, any change in the nature of this use, site, or structure will require new approvals from the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
See, I, are you using Rachel's material off her computer or is this off of something else? Because we all updated this.
I believe that this is off of, was off of Rachel's.
Maybe it's your old.
Yeah, because I'm, I know I mentioned it at the last meeting and I-
She must have another file and-
I've been trying to zero in to see if it gets carried forward and-
Okay, well, so any change in use?
Use, site, or structure.
Site or structure.
Anything else?
We'll institute that change.
Okay.
It's got to be up there someplace, I mean.
I'm sure it is.
Okay. Any problem with conditions? Okay. Any more questions from the commission? Okay, anyone in the office, office, anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor or against the application. Any reason, Peter, that you know of that we should keep it open?
No.
I'll close public hearing twenty-seven eight nine point oh two.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan modification to relocate the dumpster enclosure located at twenty-five Hazard Avenue in a BR district, map forty-five, lot eight, Paramount Realty Services applicant, Paramount Commons at Enfield LLC owner. Public hearing twenty-seven eighty-nine point oh two in a memo dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, written by John Pajini, intern town planner, with the fifteen conditions and the changes in condition number nine and then the fifteenth condition that the prior approval for the gentleman's warehouse be removed or withdrawn so that it's no longer active.
Excuse me, do we have to do a waiver first?
These were wrong.
Okay, those are wrong.
That's an alcohol waiver or something.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no good.
All right, I second that then.
Motion's made, seconded and adjourned to discussion. Hearing non, take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin?
Four.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Four.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno?
Four.
Commissioner Lori Longi?
Four.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis?
Four.
Commissioner Charles Lad?
Four.
And Commissioner Ellen Drynan?
Four.
Seven zero zero, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along up there.
Thank you.
It's looking good. Okay, public hearing twenty-eight oh six, site planned to upgrade radio cabinet through existing antennas and three more antennas located at two ninety Brainerd Road in R forty-four District, map seventy-seven lot sixty-five, secretary, I'm sorry, vice chair, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin?
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Here.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Commissioner Lori Longi?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis?
Here.
Commissioner Charles Lad?
Here.
Commissioner Ellen Drynan?
Okay, if the applicant, I'm sorry.
Stepped out, but.
Well, they'll have to know when he comes back in on the record, that's all. Commissioner Drynan will be sitting in for the missing applicant. Missing commissioner. The applicants, introduce yourselves, please, and give us a presentation.
Yes, good evening, Denise Sabo with Northeast Site Solutions. Also with me is Chuck Regubuto, also with Northeast Site Solutions. We applied on behalf of Metro PCS for the location located at two ninety Brainerd Road, owned by Connecticut Water Company, to upgrade existing equipment and also add. There now is three antennas and a radio cabinet that supports the antennas. They're looking to swap out the existing three antennas and the radio cabinet and add three new antennas and a battery backup unit.
Okay, you have the project pictures, really, and it is up in the hill and there's pine trees all around. It's not a bad location, you don't even know the water tanks are there unless you know or go up in the development.
Yes. We did receive some notes and I did go through, we went through the notes, just to address a few of the comments that were made. The antennas are within the fifteen-foot threshold, they're six feet, so they are within, they're nine feet under the thresholds. The antennas are painted to match, they are now and will continue to be, it's listed in the site plan drawings that you received in your packet. The location is completely fenced in with an access padlocked gate. We, two comments, excuse me, two comments that were on here that were required. One was the radio frequency admission report, we have the passing EME report, which I could submit in, and then another is a letter from our RF engineer, our senior RF engineer, where he made note to the coverage not changing, so plots wouldn't be needed. The update that we're doing is just to, we're going to 4G, so it's just for faster technology, it's not changing the coverage map, and he also noted in the letter that we are within the FCC regulations, staying within the frequency bands, so I have copies of that letter as well.
Thank you.
But my understanding is that the, that information was given us when the prior antennas were put up?
Yes, that you, when, you would have gotten a EME report last time as well. This is for the new.
I'd assume you'll periodically have to do upgrades to these antennas just to keep up with the technology, so.
That's correct.
You're not changing anything, you're just upgrading their?
That's, that's correct, the new, the new antennas are for the new.
Right, so we should probably periodically expect these people, all the antenna people to be coming back, you know, with their upgrades and, yeah.
Everyone right now is doing the 4G upgrade and that's what this is, yes.
Any, any questions for him? Hearing non, anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. And there's a whole list of reasons to approve and make sure we give them. The, no reason to keep it open, Peter, you got any problems?
Nope, none.
Okay, then I'll get the right number here. I'll close, close public hearing twenty-six, twenty-eight oh six.
Take the roll.
Well, there's got to be a motion.
Okay.
Do you have something to add or no?
Well, no, I thought we can do in other words or you can give it before, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve public hearing twenty-eight oh six, site plan, special permit application to upgrade the radio cabinet and replace six existing antennas with six new antennas located at two ninety Brainerd Road in an R forty-four district, map number seventy-seven lot sixty-five, Metro PS, PCS applicant and the Connecticut Water Company owner in a memo dated September twenty-fourth from John Pajini, interim town planner. And there are conditions and some changes of the conditions.
We got a problem, they're, they're not replacing antennas, right?
There's three that we're, that we're replacing and three that we're adding.
So, we're not replacing six existing antennas with six new antennas.
Correct, right.
It's adding, it's replacing three, adding three.
Going to a total.
That's what the legal adds.
Oh, that's fine, thank you. Oh, okay.
I could see her face when she was just-
Yeah, we're all looking, right.
Okay, well, to replace three antennas and add three new antennas at the same height and location on the water tank facade at an elevation of eighty-five feet above grade. Okay. With thirteen conditions.
Anything you want to change?
And again, on condition number nine.
Got it.
We need to change that, make it the use site or structure. And I think that was it, yeah.
Second?
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion?
Well, it seems to comply with the requirements of the zoning regulations and the conditions are met and so it's-
Of eight point twenty point three of the eight, fifteen standards, eight apply to this application and they do blend with the color and design of the building. And they aren't more than fifteen feet above the highest part of the structure, so it does meet most of the, the standards of it.
Okay.
And it does increase, I'm sure, the reception of people's phones, which is a benefit to the community. Take the roll.
Chairman Charles Durin? Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Four.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno?
Four.
Commissioner Lori Longi?
Four.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis?
Four.
Commissioner Charles Lad?
Four.
Commissioner Ellen Drynan?
Four. Good work, keep it up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Public hearing twenty-seven thirty point oh two, site plan modifications, plans previously approved, located at sixteen seventeen King Street. Will the second vice, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, October second, two thousand and fourteen, beginning at seven PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, eight-twenty Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning. Public hearing twenty-seven thirty point zero two, site plan modification of plans previously approved, located at sixteen seventeen King Street in a R forty-four district, the Capital Region Education Council applicant owner.
The applicant, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll take it, oh, no, he can't do that, you've got to finish.
Go ahead.
Chairman Charles Durin?
Here.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard?
Here.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno, here. Commissioner Lori Longi?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lefakis?
Here.
Commissioner Charles Lad?
Here.
Commissioner Ellen Drynan?
Here.
Commissioner Drynan will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is not present, I have a, a mem, a letter from the applicant's attorney.
Let me have it, please, I have to read it.
Thank you.
This is on a letterhead from Mayo Crowley Crowe LLC Attorneys. This is by email to PB Brierton, Office of Community Development, regarding application for site plan modification by Capital Region Educational Council, PH twenty-seven thirty point oh two, just, dear Mr. Brierton, per my conversation of the day with John Pajini, please consider this letter as memorializing the consent of the applicant, Capital Region Educational Council, in connection with the captioned application and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute's eight dash seven D parentheses A to extend for two days so as not to exceed November sixth, two thousand and fourteen, the date on which the public hearing must be closed. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions concerning this, very truly yours, David S. Hoops. Copies went to Mr. Pajini, Mr. Kent Morehart, and Mr. Douglas Rogers. So, this goes to November sixth also. So, we'll have two meetings, two hearings and a, and a planning?
No, that would be the sixteenth.
Oh, six.
November sixth would be the next.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting. And to note, I mean-
Okay, well, I, I know, first of all, John, there was no, no ART on this and John is requesting an ART.
Correct.
So, that, that is one thing that they did. I have a question for the town attorney and he's got to have an answer, we discussed it earlier, but.
Yep.
The plans that they were giving us are the plans that were not approved by P and Z. I have a problem dealing with that because then are we legitimizing, legitimizing the plans that we contest are not approved?
Agreed, and that actually needs to be figured out before we even have an ART.
Well, I'd, I'd like an answer for the commission as well, so whatever you get, it should go to all of us.
As soon as I know, I will let you know.
Because again, my problem, if we approve changes with, with what we've been giving, then are we not really approving what we are challenging in court?
I, I understand the, I understand the issue and we, and we need an answer.
We sure do.
And I have a request for, for the next meeting, in order, in order, well-
In order, in order, well, we approved these in 2011. The last date of planning and zoning submission is October 12, 2011. There have been modifications since. We don't know what they are. All we have is a revision block that says modifications, Mylar filings, an August date.
Sir, you're, you're reading from the one that I say we shouldn't be...
Yes, I know, and then I'm gonna ask a question next. And my question is, my request is, in order to know what these changes are for the next meeting, could we have the plans that we approved back on October 12, 2011?
That's what we should be working from.
Exactly, so I'd like to at least see those and then we should work from them.
But we need an answer first from the town attorney, which ones are we going to work from?
In any event, could we see them? The, the plans from October 2011? It would help just to see them and work them as well, but I'd like to have copies that we could look at.
To me, we shouldn't be working with these.
Correct.
That's what's...
So at the very least, I would like to see the October 12, 2011 plans and then in addition, I believe we should work with them.
Okay.
I understand.
I lost what I was after. Okay. So, let's see, I gotta open this to the public and then after we'll have to entertain a motion to continue to November 6. And that gives John plenty of time and then for an ART. I hope you make sure that all department heads are there.
Absolutely.
I surely would, okay.
Of who we have.
John would be representing us. All right, and anyone in the public would like to address the commission? Please come forward, ma'am, give, again, name and address.
Maureen Mullins, 1625 King Street. I had the same question that Peter had when I was looking through, just disregarding all the other stuff that followed. I wondered, site plan modification of plans previously approved. My question was, by whom, when? What's this all about? And I couldn't find the answer as I poured through.
That's why we asked the town attorney because what we're working from is the plans that we are challenging.
Well, I appreciate that you brought up the same comment that I was questioning and that you agree with it too. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission? Anyone else?
Mary Ann Turner, 7 Metal Road. Commissioner Drynan, I have a copy of the plans in case you can't get a copy.
The 2011 plans.
I have the originals. And the only reason I'm up here is I wanna be sure with whatever plan, and preferably would be the original one that you actually signed off on, there are some issues in the neighborhood that when you look at either plan, they're wrong. The original, those plans specifically say that the scoreboard is supposed to be facing west.
The original plans, I don't believe, had a field because I asked the question.
Uh, the field's in the plan that I saw.
Well...
And the scoreboard...
We, we don't have them, but the...
Well...
I had asked the original question whether they were going to have a, a field or not and then the answer was no, but that's okay.
In the plans, both sets show the scoreboard facing the west side. The scoreboard is now facing south and it's on top of a very large berm and it's over, it's on ti, it's literally imposing on the neighbor's backyard. And when it, so and they cut all the trees down on the property line before they put the berms in. We had these big old gigantic...
Well, that's one of their proposals and, but the problem is we gotta find out what ones we're working from.
Right. Whichever one that happens, you're gonna find the scoreboards in the wrong... It's in the plan, supposed to be facing west, but it's actually on the property facing south. Okay? So the scoreboard needs to move, no matter what you do. We're having some issues with erosion on the Waymoth Drive, Waymoth Drive and cul-de-sac that's facing south. Because they put a berm in and then they cut it and now, so there's an issue over there. So we need someone to go over there and look at it. No matter what plans you look at, there's an erosion problem with this berm that's not supposed to be there. And then they, when they, they put the berm in, they didn't mow our side, but now they are mowing it. We need to make, so whatever happens, if they get the property to the right height, we wanted to mow it. If they, whatever happens, you decide to keep the berm, then they gotta keep mowing it. It's gotta look tidy on our end of the world, so. And then you've got the problem where the water runoff because of the berms, you now have a swale and so the water is now backing up. And what we now have, the property always had some, I'll call them puddles. Now they have some huge lakes. And there's one that's really right on the Enfield Street side by the sidewalk.
You're not doing us any good talking to us about that.
Nope, I just wanted to put them on the record.
All right.
That's the only reason. And I figure we get them in the record and then whenever the next time you have a talk about a set of plans, it does something about something.
Okay, all right.
You can be looking at these things. So there are some problems with what's there now by whatever plan you look at and they are a problem for the neighborhood. And the one I don't wanna forget is the lighting. They have, they have the lights in the parking lot that now are bleeding into the neighbors' backyards and they're not shut off. And there's huge parts of the school that are lit up all night long, the stairwells, it looks like. So the place is very bright. Now, I, I, you know, you go over to Enfield High or Fermi, and I don't live near Fermi, so I can't speak to that, but it's not like that. So where there's some problems with the lighting, they need to be either turned off at a certain time or they need to be guarded in some way so that spillover stays out of the neighborhood. So we've got some problems. And I'm sure if we noodled on it some more, we could come up with a few more, but those are kind of the hot buttons for the neighbors right now.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, no, I think some of them, in the CEOs.
And if you do need them, I guess.
Yeah, my comment regarding those old plans is if we don't take up this application till November 6, still by the, the October 16 meeting or the packages that go out for the October 16 meeting, I would like to at that, those times, either those dates, see the old plans.
Okay, so noted.
Any, any further questions? Okay, our motion is, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, sir.
Getting awful tired.
So are we.
I had to go out and take a walk. Paul Scumro, 1620 King Street. So I gotta start thinking now. I agree with the, with the lights. I live right across from there and I have them coming into my house all the time. And it's two things, I guess, that really bother me. It's a big waste of money having so many lights on too. You know, all the time. And a good thing that happened, the day the school opened up, Dr. Douglas was over there with the, he came down off in the hill and he was talking to the police officer that they had somebody come over there the first day. Traffic is moving all right. And we were talking, I said something to him about the, the berm, you know, not mowing it and it looked so bad. And he told me, he said, you go up and tell the principal anytime that you see anything like that and tell him to get it taken care of. And I went out for a couple hours and they were mowing it. He went up and told them and cleaned it up and made it look nice and he sort of like, in other words, agreed that the thing did look awful. And today, Maureen, I was standing out there talking about this and we watched the track team run around. We had to laugh when they went up over the hill. They couldn't make the hill. They were using it for the thing and they had to stop and walk. I think it was, what was it? Two of them that ran up the first time and every other one, and even those two, when they came up, the hill was too much for them to run up over the hill. They had to walk up. And we appreciate you mentioning off and on about keeping contact, at least at the meetings, you know, mentioning what's going on. At least we know that we're being taken care of and things will be done right.
We hope.
I was just wondering who was really making all these changes? Is this the school or is it the contractors?
I don't know.
You know? It seems like when I was talking to him, I think some of us, the contractors are really, you know, not doing the right things. Nobody really knows.
Thank you very much for your input. One more question. Some of these that they're asking for are already in place, I hear.
Modifications?
Yes.
Yes.
See, this is what I said before, without enforcement, which, I mean, this is, it just grows.
Sure, I, I'm with you. I'm on, I'm with you.
It's not just this project, we've got...
Yep.
Okay.
You don't have, you don't have enforcement?
Okay.
Yeah, the Wild West.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, a motion then is in order to accept their request to continue, or I'm sorry, is that the word?
No, it says one, one's one.
To extend to November 6. Extend two days to November 6.
Okay.
To extend the hearing.
I'll make a motion to extend the hearing for two days to November 6, 2014.
That's two days beyond the 35, I would imagine, yeah.
Second.
Motion's made, second, to extend two days beyond the 35, 35 days allowed by the statutes to November 6.
Chairman Charles Durin.
Four.
Vice Chair Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Second Vice Chair Kathleen Sarno. Four. Commissioner Longi.
For the extension.
Commissioner Nick LaFakas.
Four.
Commissioner Charles Ladd.
Four.
And Commissioner Alan Drynan.
Four.
Okay, motion passes, 700.
Mr. Chairman, does this mean that they will or will not be on the agenda on October 16th? The fact that they've extended to the meeting after the 16th?
Correct, November 6.
So they will not be, they will not be here on October 16th?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, that's just good for the public to know, so that they don't have to...
Understood, yeah.
I would imagine that they will probably have to extend beyond that. Well, they don't have to, but...
Yeah, again, that would be...
Unless like things get cleared up.
Right, they would have to agree to extend.
Yeah, okay. New business changes the bylaws. You have, and I think Peter got them all together here somewhere.
Are we doing the bylaws or are we doing the...
It says it's changed the bylaws, it's the first old under...
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the changes, I'm sorry, the changes aren't highlighted, just so you know.
The changes, yeah, the changes are highlighted unless you have some additional ones.
Right.
That you wanna do tonight.
I may have some, but would, would that happen after we make a motion? Mr. Chairman, I may have some changes in the wording.
Well, let's, let's do, we'll do page by page then and change them and at the end make a motion to... The changes that we've already discussed are highlighted by Peter. If you have new ones, then we'll have to go page by page. So let's do page one.
Bless you.
Hearing none, then let's do page two.
Thank you.
Hearing none, let's do page three. Hearing none, let's, on page four, you have added 18, 19, 20, and 21. I, I have a problem with number 20 and just leave it as unresolved issues because it may not be just zoning in light.
Okay.
Yes.
You don't need those in there because you may have other issues.
Okay.
Such as the ones that are still out there, like chickens.
Yep, right. Okay. Okay, now I had...
I just, I'm going to apply, yeah, right, I just...
I guess I had questions on...
Uh, the other one down, section three, that's underlined. Voting accomplished by roll call. Because of the situation we have, so we might as well stay with it. It's, it'd be, make it just as easy for the secretary, I guess, too.
Okay.
Anything on page four?
The only question I had was, I know we have like a town attorney's report, zoning enforcement report and, but, um, aren't they in front of us in person at some point? And do we have to specify that?
That's what it is.
It's his first meeting of the month.
But what happened was the assistant town attorney requested that it wasn't necessary that she comes. So it was on quarterly basis for her only that we allowed it. If you wish to go to quarterly meeting, I would go that and change it because we don't have, fortunately, we don't have that much to do with the town attorney.
Right, but that's why I'm saying it's, we get the report from them every month, but we stay, are gonna stay with our...
The zoning enforcement officer is supposed to be here the first meeting of the month.
I would like to add the word then suggests that in person at the first meeting of the month, because first meeting of the month could be a written report.
Okay. Okay, so right prior to the word first is in person, the first meeting of the month.
On both five and six?
No, five should be quarterly.
Would that be in person, quarterly, or...
Yes, in person, quarterly. So, thank you.
On item number eight. Sorry.
And we decided the director of development, what we had a question or if he had a question for us. Is that all right with you, Peter? You don't wanna see us every, we don't see us too much today.
As needed.
Right.
So any, anything else?
Yeah, number eight, five, six, and seven are talking about a piece, a person reporting. Number eight says planning report. I'm wondering for consistency if, if we might wanna reword that to say town planner report. Elsewhere in our...
Yes.
Uh, elsewhere in our articles, it always refers to town planner or designee. That's a more general term that could apply to a planning director, an assistant planning director, an interim planning director, a contracted, interim planning director, or their superiors. So I would prefer to see town planner report.
That's fine.
As opposed to planning report.
That's fine, so eight, the change, you're crossing out planner report and town planner report.
Town planner report.
Harb's got it.
You got all that so far? Okay. Anything else on that page? We've made several changes there. Okay. Page five.
Do we wanna change the word stenographer to person in the room or something to that effect?
No.
No.
Because we don't use stenographers to take Greg shorthand anymore, which is the definition of a stenographer.
But there's, there is an actual job that...
Right.
Stenographers have to be qualified. You can't just have a person taking minutes. That's not, and I like the word competent.
Okay.
I mean, that's an actual real title, but I wanted to add...
Person, or...
Well, take evidence, I mean, we could add the word in person.
That's what...
Well, no, how do you, well, I don't know. How do you take evidence if you're not president?
Well, we're doing it now.
Well, we're doing it now.
That's what we've been doing for the last eight months.
Well, they're doing a good job, I guess.
Another transcription. In other words, if we say in person, that means not transcription.
I mean, we, we refer to them as recording secretaries, but, I mean, that's just throwing it out there.
Yeah, but a recording secretary isn't an actual position. A competent stenographer is an actual, they know how to take shorthand, they can do minutes.
Understood, but we don't hire stenographers.
And I think...
Competent or not.
That's not the title.
Years ago, they did at the time because we used to have a court stenographer back in ancient history.
Yep.
They did.
They didn't.
You should write recording secretary instead.
And they changed to this type of regulation because I think the state statutes changed from requiring it.
What do they call the position in a court? Court recorder? Court recorder? Could we use a similar title?
That probably would do.
Yeah, I looked it up, you know, in all different kinds of dictionaries, and it said stenographer is the old terminology, one who takes Greg shorthand, and then it talked about court reporter, and so, you know, these days, I suppose we create our own term, and I suppose, you know, a, the term you use for advertising, which is a recording secretary. I would like to add in person.
Where's this?
A co, yeah. Whatever. My main concern is that we put in the words in person, so.
And...
Where are we putting this now?
After a competent recording secretary or stenographer. I don't really care which one it is, but, and then after the word...
Well, wait, wait.
A competent stenographer slash court, recording secretary in person shall take evidence, and the evidence shall be electronically recorded by an electronic recording device at each hearing before the commission in which the right to appeal lies to the Superior Court. A summary of the proceedings of the hearings, and then we should add in the word and meetings, shall be incorporated into the minute book of the commissions to be a permanent part of that record.
Hearings and meetings?
Yeah, hearings and meetings.
This probably goes back to the time when we had two... When we, when we had two sessions, really. One was where the applicants came in, and then the next time was when you had hearings. Similar to what you're trying to run now with planning. But one was, one was they presented it, and then they went to an ART because it was different. Okay, so up above, a competent stenographer, and you're putting in...
Slash recording secretary.
Taking out stenographer?
No, we're, I think we should keep them both, like do stenographer slash recording secretary.
Okay.
In person.
In person, in person.
Is in person after the word evidence?
Yeah.
Yes.
Shall take evidence in person. Nonetheless, sentence, a summary of the proceedings of the hearings and meetings. I wonder if we should add that the electronic record should be included in the minute book.
We could.
Okay, I would say that a summary of the proceedings and electronic record, summary of the proceedings of the hearing and, let's see, a summary of the proceedings and the electronic record of the hearing and meetings shall be incorporated.
Uh-huh, that's good.
Where do you want that?
After...
The last sentence would read, "A summary of the proceedings and the electronic record of the hearings and meetings shall..."
Okay, and the electronic what?
And the electronic record.
Record.
Meaning like the DVD.
The first sentence talks about recorded by electronic device.
If we have a planning, if we have a planning meeting, we don't get a DVD.
Okay, well, that could be an audio record, too, then.
Well, I just...
Yeah.
Okay.
Which also could be on a CD.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving down, second, anything, I put in for secretary shall read legal advertisements, notes, note the dates and newspapers in which the advertisements appeared, conduct roll call for the commission attendance, and it was, and the voting, but I think it was better stated before, I just put in, and the, where was it? And take the rolls, roll, uh... And, and the...
Attendance and vote.
And voting by roll.
Conduct a roll, conduct a roll call for, for attendance, for commission attendance and votes. Would that do it? Roll call for, yeah.
For attendance and votes.
Commission attendance and votes.
Okay, that'll do it. I didn't... All righty, page six, there were no changes. Now, we have new discussion, and since we don't have a clear, and I think what we should wait for is a clear copy. You want to change the, vote on these tonight, or you want to wait until you get a clear copy next week and vote?
Yeah, we could do that at the next meeting. It's a planning meeting, this falls under planning, so on November 16th, we could...
October.
Sorry, October 16th, we could vote on it.
Yeah, put it on the agenda then, and with a clear copy, or lined up like you did now, too. That'll do it. Okay, thank you very much. Anything further on that? All right, then, we'll go along. New discussion of zoning regulations, 910.7 ABC. This we had a hearing on, I thought, a long time ago with, with Jose, and I don't really know whatever happened to it because that's a procedure we followed.
I'm reading, I have the minutes in front of me from February 21st, 2008, where we took this up and then denied a motion to revise this section.
We denied a motion?
We didn't, we, yes, we denied public hearing 2643 on February 21st, 2008. It was a motion, staff initiative for a text amendment to section 9.10.7 of the Enfield zoning regulations to define which applications are eligible for administration, administrative review by staff. Town of Enfield, planning department applicant, and there are four, let's see, five pages of minutes, and the final action was that Commissioner Falk made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Gregory, to accept without prejudice the motion, accept the withdrawal of that public hearing 2634 without prejudice. Motion was approved by 700 vote.
That was to approve withdrawal.
Yeah. To not have them do it straight up.
To not, to not change that section, to allow, to allow specific language about what's allowed or not.
And we did something, we changed the procedure in my time. This was prior to me becoming on the board.
Oh, that, I know what that was about. That was something Ray had proposed, I think.
Right.
Okay. Well, yeah, but that, that's, okay, that's, uh... Okay, that's, that's what that was, but I, I'm with Jose because, as I said at the meeting the other night, there was a problem, and Matt wanted an answer on what, I think it grew out of this, on what was allowed for administrative approval and what wasn't.
We said none, yeah.
And that's why we started the procedure, but Jose also, I thought we had a hearing on it, and I thought we'd pass it. Maybe we just discussed it and put it in without changing this.
So...
Yeah, I, I know it was adopted as procedure, but, okay.
So Alan's, like, memo in here was great. The only thing is, is, um... They had director of planning, and I think it should be any person in that position somehow. It's got to be a little bit more encompassing. That was in our packet, that was in the beginning.
Yeah, I agree. After looking at this again, and I had heard comments in general that it, all, all three sections, not just 9107B, but also A and B, A and C, all refer to director of planning. The bylaws we just went through are more general in nature. They talk about a town planner or designee. Since we've had assistant directors of planning, and interim directors of planning, and now, you know, an outside consultant as an interim director of planning, perhaps we should, in all three of those sections, replace the word director of planning with town planner or designee.
That is a proposed draft from Alan.
Yeah.
Oh, this was the proposed, Alan had one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a draft actually from another application. It just yanked it out because it has all three sub-paragraphs of 9107, A, B, and C, but it's the current zoning regs. I just yanked it out of another application that's pending, but this is the current page out of the zoning regs. And so I guess I would suggest a change in what I recommended so that that second sentence be added, but in addition, wherever the director of planning shows up under B or C, that it be replaced by town planner or designee, to be more generally applicable to anyone that we might work with.
Well, but what we were doing, that any modifications were announced to us before he signed.
Yes. Yes.
Prior.
This, uh...
Yeah, so my suggestion of a second sentence would be the same.
Yeah, this is our regs now.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
Alan asked me to pass that out.
Okay.
Okay.
And here's the reason, I had suggested one sentence to go in the, in the middle of paragraph B only. That's, that was in commission's correspondence. It says, "Prior to administrative approval of any such minor changes, the director of planning," now I'm saying we should perhaps have that read town planner or designee.
But we don't take care, you're allowing him before he talks to us.
No, we're, that's why...
No, prior to, it says prior to, and it continues on, "Shall first obtain authorization by vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission at one of the two regularly scheduled monthly meetings of the commission." So inserting that sentence into paragraph B after the first sentence.
This goes this.
You know, the commission's correspondence, I had suggested a sentence in a, in an email dated September 19th that...
This says up here, he may approve minor changes.
Yeah, so we got to get that out of there.
That's what I'm saying.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, you can't just...
Yeah, it has to be.
You don't want, uh...
Yeah, we have to change that.
That's what I'm saying, you got...
Okay, well, I had thought that adding that second sentence, it says he may approve, but then it continues on to say before, though, approving such minor changes, he first has to receive authorization. But we could reword the first sentence also.
Yeah, I think we have to.
You have to.
Okay.
First... So it should be kind of a step process. First...
Will you leave one unfulfilled or field conditions require the director of planning?
And consult...
No, you don't, that...
You can say two.
He always require that.
Right, right.
So you can say the director of planning to consider minor changes, and then continue on to say that the prior administrative approval is required before he can do that.
Well, the director of planning is to report the changes to, at the next commission meeting.
That has to first obtain authorization by vote.
Yeah.
But I do think that, for ease of staff, he would need to go to the, because he's going to get the request of the minor modification. Then he could go to the staff members and present that to them to see what their feedback is. Present all of that to the board.
Why not just put this in? Prior to administrative approval of any minor changes, the director of planning shall first obtain authorization by vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
At one of the two regularly scheduled monthly meetings of the commission.
Perfect.
And then replace the first sentence, take the first sentence of B out and replace it.
Take the whole section out.
Okay.
Take B out, you're replacing B.
Okay.
You don't need to re, you know. And if you want to put in there, uh, that it would require, well...
Well, then I think we got to, we should take C out, too.
What?
We have to take C out, too.
Wait a minute. Well, yeah, because then you've got the whole thing.
Right.
Prior to any administrative approval of any, never mind change, put any changes.
Any changes.
Take word minor out of there. Prior to administrative approval of any changes, the director of planning shall first obtain authorization by vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission at one of the two regularly scheduled monthly meetings of the commission.
That's all you got to say.
That's it.
That's all you got to say.
Okay.
It takes care of B and C.
And my only suggestion would be to change director of planning to town planner to be consistent with our bylaws and more generally applicable to whoever we're working with.
Well, that's fine.
Whoever's in that position, whatever it's called.
Yeah, that's what I said, and or any person in the position of.
Okay.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, well, then do it. Well, let's get the wording down the way you want it. Because this has to go to capital region, too, right?
Okay.
Yes, and they have 30 days to review.
Yeah, and it has to be posted with the town clerk, and the whole bit goes to a public hearing. So make sure it's what you want. I imagine the town attorney's going to have to look at the wording of it. He always does.
Yep, and...
So it's got the whole thing, so make it exactly the way you want it.
So, prior to the administration approval of any changes, the director, or the town planner and or any person in the position of shall first obtain authorization by vote of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners at one of the two regularly scheduled monthly meetings of the commission.
Okay, so back up for a second. Change director of planning to town planner or...
And or any person in the position of, because it could be a consultant, and it could be a...
Right now, we have a consultant, yeah.
I mean, it, yeah, it could have been an assistant planner.
Yeah, it was an assistant planner.
Alan used the word designate. So whoever you designate...
Well, that means that anybody could sign it, but that's, it should be...
It should be a planner.
It should be a planner.
And the reason I told, I picked town planners because that's what our bylaws use.
Yeah, so that's why town planner, any person in the position of. Because we could have a consultant, we could have somebody stepping in.
You could have what, just for one, one application?
Patient.
If there was a, a problem, if we had a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Again, the heading would stay the same. This is only applies to modifications of approved site plans. Not new site plans.
Right.
Okay.
Any, well, you could all add, any, any approval of the commission would include consultation with fire, police, or, or, let's say, that the appropriate agency. But it'd be, could be the health department. And make sure that that's there, too.
Say that every time we give it anyways.
I know, but then we wouldn't have to.
We would, yeah.
We wouldn't have to. It would be understood.
Okay.
So, so the last wording is what the, yeah, approval would require consultation with the appropriate agencies.
Right. Okay.
Such, I don't know if you want to add all of them or just...
Appropriate agencies.
Appropriate agencies.
Yeah.
Close enough.
You put the word appropriate in there. So you want to hear that again, Peter, or Barb?
Hold on a minute.
Okay. Then we wouldn't have to keep redoing that.
Okay, so why don't I read back to you what you, what you want?
Okay, A stays.
A stays, remove B and C.
Right.
And replace with, prior to administrative approval of any such changes.
No, any changes. Leave out...
I'm sorry, any changes. The town planner and or person in position of shall first obtain authorization by vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission at one of the two regularly scheduled meetings of the commission. With approval, I'm sorry, period. Approval would require consultation with appropriate agencies. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to take a vote on that now?
Yeah.
This is to the wording?
Yes.
Does, do you have your approval, or do you want to just take a consensus? I guess we wouldn't take a vote, not now. How about a consensus? Huh?
Do we vote now, or once we get the...
We'd have to vote once we get it, to, but that's a public hearing and everything else, but it...
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that everybody's happy with what we got.
Can I just suggest one change? It's, after, the town planner or is, does, I suggest instead that we have any person acting as town planner?
That's what she has.
Yeah.
Well, no, she has a town planner or anyone, what's the...
Position of.
Anyone in position of, of, okay, whatever.
It's the same thing.
Tomatoes, tomatoes.
Town attorney may, they change that, but that's, that's what we're asking for. Town attorney may, they change that, but that's, that's what we're asking for. I don't know what might be found.
Okay, so we'll draft that up and we'll send it to the town attorney, and we'll have it prepared for your vote next meeting, which will be October 16th.
Perfect.
Yeah, but the vote for what? We can't do anything until it's cleared to all the other places. It's got to go to the crowd.
Great, but that could go out right away, now that he's got that.
Well, okay, I'm just...
No, you can't. You can't send it out until the town attorney does.
Town attorney has to check it, and then we go out to the other agencies. I just don't know if you want to, you know, if you're okay, you know, I'll write this thing up and send it to the town attorney, and that's on consensus, I guess.
Yeah, but we'll have to wait until the town attorney does before we send it on to the...
Correct.
Because we may not want what the town attorney says.
Right.
Okay.
So it's going to take a while.
So then why wouldn't we just say this is what we want?
Yeah.
No matter what. I mean...
It's got to go to the town attorney, so. Okay.
All right.
I guess the wording is okay. That's what we have. All righty. And we have a gentleman in the, out in front there, so I...
I don't see anything.
Is there anything, can we do anything for you, sir?
No, there's an interest.
Oh, all right.
Came to look us over.
Oh, good.
I have one.
Any other business?
I did have one question.
Okay.
For Peter. I should have brought this up at the time. When you're sending this stuff to the town attorney, through the chair to the town attorney, we waive, we cannot waive anything in our regulations, but we waive submissions. So can you ask him if submissions are different than actual parts of the regulation? Because I know in McKenzie, we're not allowed to waive any of the actual regulations any longer, but we do sometimes waive surveys and certain items that we don't need to actually look at.
Like an A2 survey, if it's been done before, or we don't think we need one?
And maybe we might need a different wording to wa, instead of waive, like, we don't feel it's needed, or if we can't use the word waive. I just want to know what the proper procedure would be.
Okay, so are submissions different than zoning requirements?
Right.
Okay.
What is it?
I mean, I'm thinking they are, but I guess I'd like to know from him, or her, or them, the office.
Someone.
Someone, yeah.
Okay. Okay, item 15, other business, that takes here or that. Anybody else? No? Okay, authorization, administrative approvals, or applications to be received. We got anything?
Yeah, we got a couple of things. First one is, I actually have a question for you. We have an, someone came in to, they were approved at House on Pearl Street, 143 Pearl Street. They were approved to add a, to change their single family to a duplex. They are in R33 zone. Now they're coming, that was two years ago?
Oh, boy.
It was two years ago. Now they're coming back to add a third unit, but under our regs in R33, multifamilies are not allowed, so...
That I'll take care of.
Okay. I'm just wondering how they got through two years ago.
Got to wait until two.
Well, was it changed?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I'm sh, what?
No, she's asking whether the zoning regs changed. No, they weren't.
Family at one time, maybe?
No, it's not TV. It's R33. I can't, I can't hear you. She really used the mic. Anyways, so that was, that's my question. I mean, if...
Well, I don't know. We'd have to see the form, because I don't know what it was.
It was a special use permit, and it was filed in the town clerk's office on 7/20/2012, and it was located in R33 district, and it was for a duplex at 143 Pearl Street.
And it was approved.
And it was approved by you guys.
Maybe it was a mistake that we didn't know what district it was.
You got the rest of the record, though. What's, what was presented to us?
All right, so instead of trying to figure out what we did?
Oh, I know.
What did they want to do going forward?
They want to add a third unit, and I told them at the time when they came, I said, "I understand they approved this two years ago, but under the, under the use table, it's not allowed."
Right, so it might have been a mistake, I'm thinking. It was a slip by.
Well, one mistake doesn't mean that you make a second.
It doesn't. Thanks.
Right.
So what is, so what's our question, what is the question?
You want some of the three family.
The question is, I wanted to know, since it was just two years ago, why it was approved, if it's not allowed use. So, because they're asking me, hey, they did it two years ago, how come we can't do it again?
Did you go back two years ago, look at minutes or anything like that?
That's, we pulled the file.
I'm thinking it might have been a mistake.
This was formerly the James Rinaldi Post, and that's, it was a post home.
But it was still R33.
So maybe it was just a mistake.
Okay. Just, I wanted to clarify before I told these people one way or the other.
And we probably aren't going to compound the error.
Uh-uh.
And make it three.
Not again.
Should have did the two when they had the chance.
See, it says, there was a kitchen on the first floor and a kitchen on the second floor, with shared laundry. So I, there were four entrances, one on the front, two on the side.
Is that one of those, they did it and then came to ask us?
I think so. It might have been.
Okay.
Probably what happened, so we'd let it slide.
No more.
Putting it into a two was a mistake.
What's the next one?
The next one is, well, actually, that brings us, we got an application in for one, for turf products on Moody Road. It's a, it's actually, asking to install a gas and diesel pump above ground. They came in to ask for it to be done administratively. Obviously, that's not going to happen. Even if I could, I wouldn't. So, so that one's going to come through the normal channels. I just had it in my notes just to let you know it'll come.
Was this a possibility that, and I don't know, the possibility that they had a rental upstairs and the post used downstairs, and that's why, because it was really a two? She's dotting your head.
I'm going to go.
Okay. No, I think...
That makes two of us.
That's okay.
See you later.
Yes. We're still four.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, that may be the answer so far, because it is the post, and it does mention the kitchens upstairs.
Right, but they, they have two, but they want to go to three, which is not allowed, so we're not, that's what I think Peter's trying to find out.
Yeah, no.
No.
But that's probably, he said why.
Well, we don't...
It was a post, and they were, had...
I just wanted to know what the background was, so that I can tell them definitively yes or no.
Jenny, you had an answer. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm willing to listen.
No, I know it.
I was here in 2011 when they did it, and I was kind of shadowing Jose, and it's my recollection that at one time they had what they called a caretaker apartment, so that, because they weren't as busy as they were, and they needed somebody to clean up after the parties and make sure nothing got broken into, and I assumed that's how they got it. But I don't know that for a fact. That's just what I'm remembering.
I think that was similar to the former Masonic building.
Yes.
They also had an apartment there, the whole thing, in the back.
But I do have a good memory.
It says...
But at any rate, they can't have a three.
Commissioner Longy asked the Dawsons if their home was a duplex. They said it was a single family. Mr. Guiner said he had misspoken earlier and had thought all the abutting properties were duplexes.
So whether it was a mistake or not, we don't repeat if it was a mistake.
Understood. I just wanted clarification.
Done that.
No. Okay. Why is this Mrs. Jenkins playground? This must be back before. So that apparently, that is why.
So then that brings us to applications to be received.
Okay.
There are two.
Okay.
PH number 2807, special permit to request a cafe liquor license located at 481-483 Enfield Street in a BG district. MAP 33, lot 256, Michael Lerners?
Lennars.
Lennars. Applicant Frank Enterprise VLC owner.
It's a what? I'm sorry.
Liquor license.
Liquor license for something.
Package store.
For where?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Whirlyball. It's a liquor license for the Whirlyball, which was where Leah Kia was on Enfield Street.
Oh, oh, but it's a package store, not for Whirlyball. In that...
No, it's a liquor license for the Whirlyball, for the Whirlyball use.
When they applied, I remember we talked about alcohol and how we, I believe how we would keep it out of there, and they don't have the right to serve alcohol, do they now? I don't think so. And there was, oh, there was concern about people bringing in alcohol, and how do you prevent minors from getting access to the alcohol that gets brought in? So we need to look at the record from the previous approval to look at what we said about that.
The recommendation would be for the sixth.
Yeah, liquor license doesn't take too long.
Yeah, but it's in the Whirlyball. It's in the, it's in the Whirlyball for the kids, or where the kids go, so it might be a little bit different.
You said it's a package store.
No.
If I could intervene for a second?
Yeah.
The way it's set up, when you see the pictures, the actual cafe is in the back. All the entertainment, the foosballs and all those stuff, all the entertainment stuff, is in the front. There's a designated spot in the back, so.
I misspoke about the package store. There's actually another, a package store that we were looking at that will be coming, but this is for Whirlyball, for a liquor license to serve at Whirlyball.
What? Is it just a beer and wine license?
Beer and wine.
Yeah, but are we doing the planning stuff on the sixth, or we're not doing the planning stuff on the sixth?
On the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth. October 16th, planning.
Oh, okay.
November.
November 6th.
Oh, this is the sixth. Okay, got it. That's, I misunderstood the dates you were trying to say.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So that, you're okay with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so PH 2808, special use permit for Dunkin' Donuts with a dry-thru lane located at 95 Rafia Road, that's Rafia Plaza, in a BL district, MAP, it's 67 lot 422, George Rafia and Sons, Inc.
Where are they going to put the, because there's one...
The daycare.
To put a daycare in this between the buildings, and we were worried when we allowed the daycare for taking the kids out to the...
If you're looking at the plaza, the right-hand side, the end unit where the buildings are split, the proposal is to bring the people into the plaza, wrap around the building, and come through that split in the buildings.
That's exactly where the daycare is.
Or the daycare has their...
Daycare never went through.
Oh.
She got to the building department, and there was too much building stuff that needed to be completed, so the daycare never went in there. It's an actual consignment shop now.
He withdraw? I mean, is that withdrawn? Because he was another case.
Yep.
Yeah, she never, she never put her special use permit downstairs.
But is, if it's still active, someone could.
Still active. She's got five years.
We could ask her for the withdrawal.
You have to.
It's the same woman as, was for the Enfield Street a couple weeks ago, Sharon Nelson.
You'd have to, if that, if that application's still active.
Active, she could go back there.
Mm-hmm.
Or anyone, actually.
Yeah, anyone. But see, that's one of the reasons we have that, the history that we were having Rachel put out.
So set it up for the sixth, then, as long as that's part of it.
Yeah, that could be one of the conditions, that it has to be withdrawn before we allow it.
Yep, we'll look into that before it gets here.
No.
It did, that one went to ART.
That was the one on the left-hand side was where the daycare was going to be, but now what's the building on the right? Is that the store?
Carquest.
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 Carquest Automotive Parts.
Corkies.
Corkies.
Corkies. Okay, so I guess they could make a round, but then they got back entrances.
They do it back.
The, O'Reilly, Riley School of Dance has parking out back, and the entrance out back.
Right, so they have set up travel lanes to go around the building.
So you're going to have to have a crosswalk painted there.
Correct. I think we brought that up at ART.
Oh, you already had it at ART?
Yes.
All right, because people coming out of Riley's, people drive through parking lots like they're on 91, and those kids aren't going to be looking. They're happy and having a grand time in the dancing and everything, talking with each other. I don't know if they'll be looking when they come out that door.
Still got to hear it, though.
Yeah, but at least we let them know.
I know, I know. I just...
So...
The traffic safety officer's on board.
Yeah, he was there.
All right, okay.
So...
You got to hear it, so they might as well do the same thing.
Next meeting on the 16th.
Sure.
We have a laundry list of things down at the bottom of applications to be received, but what we really need to focus on is TBR, and I know you guys had some, you had some concerns.
That's why I couldn't see that we, we didn't get the meeting.
Yeah, that's our, that's our workshop, or is that, yeah.
That's our work, yeah, okay.
Yep, so I know that you provided comments to Rachel. I'm pretty sure that, you know, he...
They should be on our, well, I don't know.
I'll look for them. I'll see what I can find, but if you have anything else, if you could email me directly.
They're in that July 31st minutes that we haven't approved yet, that it's still in the works.
Okay, I'll take a look at those.
Okay.
Okay.
Well...
That's it.
Okay. Chair, let me tell you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A solid favor. Just raise your hands this time. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Barbara and Peter.